Okay, I just received an email from Councilmember Marshall. He says he's calling in by phone because for some reason Zoom is not working on his end. So now we need to verify which phone number he is.
Right. We can do that when you take the role. Are you ready to go?
Well, one moment. In order to verify that, I need to promote them to panelist. One moment.
It's the 2227 number.
Okay. Oh.
Okay, he's there.
Ask to unmute.
Councilmember Marshall, is that you?
I'm asking him to unmute.
He's unmuted?
Yeah, it's me.
It's you. Good. All right. Are you ready, Anastasia?
Yes.
Kenmore City Council is now in session. Will a clerk please take the role?
Councilmember O'Kane?
Here.
Councilmember File?
Here.
Councilmember Marshall? Deputy Mayor Herbig?
Here.
Councilmember Kugler? Councilmember Kugler, can you hear us? We'll wait. Mayor Baker?
Here.
Councilmember Shrubnik?
Here.
We see, I'm seeing Angela twice.
Uh huh, me too, but I don't hear her.
No, I don't either.
And I don't see a visual either.
Nope. Now there's only one.
You might need to log out and log back in. Mayor, what would you like to do? Would you like to wait?
Yeah, no, let's go ahead and
Proceed?
Yeah, and when she comes online, we'll note that she's now present. Just let the record reflect that she is trying to log on. We can see that she's here, but she's having some difficulties, as is Councilmember Marshall. All right, next item, flag salute. If you'll please join me in the flag salute, and the city manager's got the flag for us, so that's wonderful. I pledge allegiance
I pledge allegiance
to the flag United States of America and to the Republic
Republic
which stands
One nation
one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For all.
All right, if there are no objections, the agenda will stand approved as written. Next item is public comment. Clerk?
My agenda indicates that we have a presentation and agenda approval, but
Yes, you're right, we do. Recognition of outgoing planning commissioners presented by the Community Development Director, Ms. Bent. There.
Thank you. Well, I don't know if Mike Mulcair and Carol Baker are with us. Those are the two outgoing planning commission members. They both served six years on the planning commission, and they've tackled some big topics. And we've tackled the critical area regulations, the shoreline regulations. We did the manufactured housing regulations, the pros plan update, and that's just to mention a few. And Carol and Mike played a big role in asking staff difficult questions and wrestling with those difficult policy questions. And from a staff perspective, they were great to work with on the planning commission. So I would like to recognize them, and I would like now to turn it over to you, Mayor, to kind of give them any recognition from the council perspective. Thank you.
Yeah, Mike Mulcair has been with us for a long time. He's one of the early ones that we appointed to a planning commission. And Mike has had tremendous influence on decisions that the council had ultimately make. His thoughtfulness and care in the agendas and making sure he knew the agenda material has been really outstanding. He's been in on some tough decisions, and I really, really appreciate, Mike, all the time and energy you've put in to the planning commission, and I really thank you for their service. Is there anything you'd like to add, Mike?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor Baker and council. And I'd like to say it's been a privilege and an honor to serve the city of Kenmore as a planning commissioner for two terms over the past six years. As Debbie mentioned, we tackled quite a lot of issues over that time, as you can imagine. And first, I'd like to thank city staff for always being prepared and very, very diligent in the work that it takes to get the issues in front of and the research behind the conversations that we hold every other Tuesday. So great thanks to both Debbie and Lori Anderson for all their hard work. Thanks, of course, to Mayor Baker and the council for being terrific at guiding the right topics to the planning commission and then taking our input and making the right decisions on behalf of the city. And then finally, I'd just like to say thank you to all of the engaged and informed citizens of Kenmore who participated in this process. You know, many nights, it was really just city staff and the commission who would attend the meeting. But there were certain topics, most specifically the manufactured housing communities discussion, where we had tremendous community input. Every seat was filled, and that was for weeks and weeks at a time. So without the work of staff and the council, and of course, our great citizens, my work wouldn't have been nearly as effective, but I very much appreciate your recognition tonight.
Thank you, Mike. And you mentioned the manufactured homes. That was a tremendous decision, and you guys on the planning commission really did your homework on that one and really flushed out the issues. And you made that task easier than it would have been. So thank you all for the care and effort you put in to that decision and all decisions, really. Carol Baker, Carol, is she present? Carol is no relation to me. We just happen to share the last name. She also has been involved for a number of years, and we really appreciate everything that she's done. I don't think people realize how much work it is on the planning commission. The volumes of material that have to be learned, the issues that we send to the planning commission. It's not easy. It's a tough job. And again, thank you all. Ms. Bent, is there anything else you want to add?
No, I don't. We will be forwarding a little certificate of appreciation to both Mike and Carol. And so that, as we're not in person, we'll be sending that out in the mail to them.
And Lori, Lori is present, right?
She is.
Mrs. Anderson, is there anything you would like to add here?
Thank you.
I saw you lurking.
That's right. Anyway, it was, as Debbie said, a joy to work both with Carol and with Mike. And we will miss them, although we are excited to welcome our two new commissioners. So I think working with the planning commission is always interesting and entertaining, and it's a very, very thoughtful group. So thank you to Carol and to Mike.
All right. Thank you. So we'll move on to the next item. Now, city clerk, if you would be so kind?
The next segment is public comment. We want to welcome our community members to the council's meeting. In this forum, the council cannot engage or dialogue with the public because the primary role of the council is to listen. All comments must be addressed to the mayor and the city council. Please use the raise hand feature if you wish to speak. The clerk will acknowledge your request and call your name when it's your turn. Your time will start when we confirm that we can hear you. Please state your name, city, residence for the record, and keep your comments to the allotted three minutes. Your time cannot be granted to another, and your clock time will not be reset unless there are extenuating circumstances and the presiding officer has expressly allowed it. Screen sharing is not allowed. You can submit materials to the council or clerk in advance. This meeting is being recorded. We thank you for taking the time to express your comments, and we will begin. At this moment, I see three hands raised, and I'd like to call them in this order. Mr. Peoples, Stacy V., and Elizabeth Mooney. Mr. Peoples, can you hear us?
Yes.
All right, we hear you.
Great. John Peoples, Kenmore. Good evening, city council and Kenmore neighbors. Happy New Year to you all. I'd like to begin tonight by joining the council and offering a sincere thank you on the behalf of the people of Kenmore to President Trump and Vice President Pence for their hard work and four years of service to their country and to us, the American people. I especially thank President Trump for encouraging his supporters at the January 6th rally to quote, "remain peaceful, march peacefully," and to do, quote, "no violence." All plain English appeals to peaceful civic engagement. I also thank Vice President Pence for his strong and determined reboot of the joint congressional session after the rioters had been cleared from the Capitol Building. His was an example of A-plus statesmanship, and I hope we see a lot more of him in the future. Their examples of appealing to peaceful civic engagement and determined completion of the people's business are good examples to follow. Next, I'm looking forward to applying for a position on the Diversity, Equity, Inclusion Task Force. What a boring civic experience it would be if the task force were staffed only with yes-men, with no thoughtful loyal opposition. My purpose on the task force
I just wanted, I apologize, I didn't step in, Mr. Peoples. We can't be using public records to promote ourselves for elected offices or appointed offices.
Point taken and understood. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Peoples.
No, I'm not done. I'm particularly concerned that the money the council is planning to set aside for this initiative and the training materials, while well-meaning, will not achieve the stated goals of the initiative any more quickly than what we all should already know and practice when it comes to good, decent human relations. In the meantime, I ask the council and the city manager to ensure that no Kenmore municipal employee is forced to participate in the existing or future training on the topic. Until next time, all the best. Congratulations to the outgoing planning commissioners, and thank you to the council for the opportunity to recite the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you and good night.
Thank you, Mr. Peoples.
You're welcome.
Stacy V.?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. I'm so excited that the city council retreat brought forward affordable housing as the top goal. We need our city leaders to strive for more affordable housing. However, I'm a little disappointed in the changes in 1877. Kenmore is a great giving community. Our community needs our city to be giving to. We need the city to apply for grants for affordable housing for stakeholders that are already here. We need the city to hold developers to contributing to the crisis at hand. Our residents deserve public hearing to voice our concerns as well. Look around. Who is our homeless? Our workers at grocery stores, restaurants, coffee shops, as well as our seniors, disabled, low income. They are all living in their cars, RVs, and tents. We need to contribute to getting locals out of their cars, tents, and RVs, and into affordable housing. As soon as the COVID moratorium ends, how many more will be evicted, living on our streets? None of those locals can afford the market rate units. We need real low affordable housing and very low affordable housing, in the 40% and 35% and lower. The Amendment 1877 needs to state that. We need to keep our seniors aging in place. Most of these groups are one injury, one sickness, one car problem away from being evicted. Please look to Shoreline for an example of adding and filling the need of real affordable housing. We need to do the right thing now. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Alswell.
Ms. Mooney?
Hi, good evening. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Thank you. I've been trying to get my microphone to work. My name's Elizabeth Mooney, and I live in Kenmore at 5934 Northeast 201st Street. I am a member of the Kenmore Clean Air Coalition and also president of the nonprofit People for an Environmentally Responsible Kenmore, PERC. And I'd like to thank the representatives of Microsoft for coming here to present their findings from the air monitors tonight, and also to David Baker for making that an opportunity. I look back to 2017 when PERC partnered with the STEM students that Dr. Robin Evans-Agnus brought up from UW-Tecoma to Kenmore to conduct citizen science air monitoring for one day at citizens' homes and at the public trails and the state park in Kenmore. So I'm wondering if we could maybe partner in 2021 during Earth Day celebrations, perhaps as we continue with our Stream Fest activities that PERC's partnering with Snow King Watershed Council, and maybe work with you all on air monitoring, perhaps to test for VOCs in addition to the other components that you plan to test for in the future. Puget Sound Clean Air Agency has a grant for VOCs, and maybe we could do a pilot study here with volunteers to answer some of the questions about the VOCs that some of us have concerns cause health problems. I also want to thank you for the opportunity and help from our lobbyists to have meetings to support Representative Jerry Paulette's House Bill 1057. And I want to get the word out to allow users of the public trails in common areas to file complaints regarding asphalt emissions from the stationary source. I welcome anybody to call me if you want help at who to contact. Air quality is a major concern of ours, and this past summer highlighted the weeks of unhealthy air quality. We do look forward to what Microsoft is going to, or what Richard Sawyer's going to present tonight about Microsoft's air monitoring. Sorry, with 37 seconds. I am wondering, is there any possibility, as we look forward to passing House Bill 1057 that Representative Paulette wrote, could we maybe look at putting a sign up at our public places now to alert visitors and citizens of the phone numbers that we can call if they detect the asphalt emissions or other air quality concerns, or numbers of volunteers that are willing to help get the word out about sending letters and emails to our legislators to support House Bill 1057? Thank you very much. Stay safe.
Thank you, Ms. Mooney.
Thank you. Mr. Morton? David Morton?
Is he your last person?
I see no further hands raised.
All right. Mr. Morton is also testifying in front of the Redmond City Council tonight, and he did send an email saying that if he could if he could go after, we were done. We are now, I believe, finished with public comment. So there's really nothing else we can do except get in public comment and move on with our next item.
I see one
Pardon me?
There you are. We hear you, Mr. Morton.
I have finally rejoined your Zoom meeting. It took a while of circling around there, and it looks like I'm here now, finally. May I please present a three-minute comment?
Yes, please.
Okay. Good evening, councilmembers. I'm David Morton. I live near Redmond. My objective is to improve the standard of living of those in the city of Kenmore and its neighbors. If your neighbor is smoking you out with wood smoke from their chimney, you can register a complaint with Puget Sound Clean Air Agency, or PSCAA. Their mission is to work together to clean the air we breathe and protect our climate through education, incentives, and enforcement. If you register an odor complaint against Cadman Asphalt in Kenmore about their emissions of toxic VOCs and polycyclic aromatic hydrocarbons, or PAHs, which are known to cause cancer, coughing, asthma, skin irritation, headaches, dizziness, and nausea, PSCAA may issue a notice of violation. Has PSCAA suggested to the asphalt plant that there are many ways to reduce their emissions of toxic VOCs and PAHs? Has the agency recommended that Cadman upgrade their antique plant to a modern facility? No one appears to be aware of the quantity or type of hazardous chemicals contained in the asphalt cement which is used by the plant. Asphalt cement is supposed to be the heaviest, most viscous parts of petroleum, but the powerful stench emitted by this plant for years suggests they've been using asphalt cement mixed with lighter, more volatile VOCs and PAHs. As the population grows and moves closer to Cadman, the need for odor management grows. The neighborhood around Cadman is dealing with significant odor issues. When the Everett-Marysville area was confronted with significant odor issues, PSCAA started an odor monitoring project in the area in 2012 to better understand how the odors are being produced and how to reduce them. Funding for that project was provided by Seattle, King County, PSCAA, and Cedar Grove Composting, which had been assessed odor penalties by PSCAA. Hot Mix Asphalt producers want to be good neighbors. They strive to build clean, non-toxic facilities compatible with the rest of the neighborhood. To improve the standard of living in the city of Kenmore and its neighbors, the community might conduct an odor monitoring program in the neighborhood around Cadman. People in the project area would be able to learn more about the odors they are experiencing. This information will also help those causing odors to take appropriate action to lessen their impact on the community. Wow. 16 seconds left. Thank you for fitting me in this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Morton.
And just an announcement that I need to make is there is a chat feature in Zoom, and we do not use it. So any chats, we will not see, and we will ignore. So thank you. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Is there a motion?
Apologies, Mayor Baker. I see one last hand raised. It was raised before. We didn't notice it.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. Janet? Janet, can you hear us? Janet?
Yes. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, we hear you.
Okay. And I am asking in my three minutes. My name is Janet Hayes, and I live at 6303 Northeast 181st in Kenmore. And I was wanting to comment on the dredging that has been occurring. And I've watched it as it went out into the navigation channel and then into the inner channel. But I noticed today that they are not dredging the actual birthing channel, which has a sponsor of either King County or city of Kenmore. I believe that that process or that project of dredging should have included the birthing channel, which is part of a pioneer towing company. It is at the very end of the channel, and it's after the wharf. And I know that no testing has been done by the Army Corps of Engineers in that inner birthing channel. Not the inner channel, but the birthing channel. A lot of the barges that come in, in fact, most of them turn around at the very east end of the birthing channel, and they carry out the sediment in turbulence out into the navigation channel. My question is, I am wondering why that part of Lake Washington has not been tested? And if the owner of that property intends to have dredging done. It was not done today, and they have left that area. I hope someone can answer my question regarding that. A lot of the runoff from the asphalt plant and the cement plant go into that east end of the birthing channel. And that's my question. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Hayes.
Yes.
I see one final hand raised from Shannon. Shannon, can you hear us? Shannon?
Hello?
Hi.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, yes. I live in Kenmore, and I have a disabled daughter. She's now 25, and we're looking for housing for her. And there isn't any place that we've found in Kenmore that can accommodate her income, which is SSI. Another person who spoke talked about the need for affordable housing in Kenmore, and I am really echoing that. We don't have many options at all. Most of the developments that are set aside for people with low incomes have years-long waiting lists. And we would love for her to have a place to move out of our home into Kenmore near us where she could afford to live. I know there are many, many people in this situation. It seems like a very pressing need. So I'm here to advocate for affordable housing for disabled people and low-income people so that they can live in Kenmore with, near their families. So that's what I have to say. I'm just getting up to speed on studying the issue. I don't know all the ins and outs of housing in the area, but I'm learning. But I just wanted to make my voice heard at this point as an advocate. Thanks.
Thank you very much for your comments.
Thank you.
There are no other people to come before us. There is, I think, a misconception, Ms. Hayes. Let's, city manager, can you please address the dredging and the navigation channel?
Yeah, mainly that's an operational question, and staff can answer that question if you call us or email us.
Great. Thank you. All right. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Is there a motion?
So approved?
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on this? And all those in favor of approving the consent agenda, the aye?
Aye.
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 Opposed? The consent agenda stands approved unanimously. Next item on the agenda is the business agenda. And the first item is to bid award to authorized city manager to execute contract number 20-C2143 with KLB Construction, an amount of $9,805,000 to construct the 68th Avenue Northeast Pedestrian and Bicycle Safety Improvement, T42. Mr. Vincente? Mr. Vincente.
Good morning, Mayor Council. Uh, we're here to talk to you about the sixty-eighth Avenue Ped Bike project and to seek approval on the construction contract. Normally we do this under the consent agenda, but there were some things that we felt were important to bring up to council and the public. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Kent Vaughn, project manager for the project.
Good evening, Mayor Council. Uh, I've got a brief presentation to give you an update on sixty-eighth Avenue. Anastasia, if you want to put that up. We'll be going through a brief overview of the project scope, the status, uh, the schedule, and what the planned construction detours will be as we move forward through construction and also request approval of the construction contract. Next slide. So the sixty-eighth project, uh, it's roughly a mile and a half long. It goes from one eighty-second to sixty-first place. Uh, the project budget is roughly thirteen million dollars and as we're adding sidewalk on one side and bike lanes on both sides throughout this project limit. As with most sidewalk projects, that's kind of the tip of the iceberg. There's a lot of other project components included. Listed here, uh, some major items like storm drainage. Uh, we'll go back to that slide. Yeah, uh, storm drainage, retaining walls. There's a lot of steep slopes along the corridor. Uh, there is some large tree removal, especially through the not one ninety-fifth to one ninety-eighth area. Uh, there's a full width overlay after we're all done with all the underground. It'll be nice and clean. We'll re-stripe the roadway. We're adding signage. What not listed here is we're adding an RFB crossing at one eighty-fifth street and sixty-eighth, which will be nice. And also we have, uh, several speed feedback signs along the corridor that will strategically place. I think there, I believe there's four along the corridor to slow traffic, um, and control speeds. Uh, we also have utility relocation. Uh, North Shore Utility District is partnering with the city. Uh, they've got several, they've got a lot of water main work and sanitary sewer work, uh, that was in conflict with their drainage. That is included in the contract. Uh, we've got mitigation planting in Wallace Swamp Creek Park. Uh, we've got two boardwalks over sensitive areas, one along the front edge of North Shore Utility District and one along sixty-second Avenue. And we've also got private, private property restoration. There's a lot of driveways that we need to tie in and, uh, several of them are very steep. Next slide. Just to give you a closer look at what the cross-sections look like in the downtown. From one eighty-second to one eighty-fifth, we're building sidewalks and amenity zones on the west side of the roadway. And we're going to add additional parking kind of to mirror the other side of the roadway. The bikes will be sharrowed in the traveled lane through this section. As we go to one eighty-fifth up to one eighty-seventh, we have sidewalks and amenity zones, uh, bike lanes both sides. We have a little bit of room to squeeze in some buffer, not much, one foot on each side. Um, we also have a boardwalk that's going to, uh, complete a sidewalk gap along the North Shore, North Shore Utility District frontage. Uh, next slide. As we get further north, one eighty-seventh, pretty much through the rest of the corridor, uh, we go into our skinny cross-section, which was reduced back in twenty nineteen. And the reason for that is steep slopes, stream impacts, and the steep driveways along the corridor. And also the cost associated with the full section. Uh, we've got a sidewalk on one side. We've got a five-foot wide bike lane and, and ten-foot traveled lanes. And as you see, there's retaining walls. Next slide. Project status, uh, design's complete. We have our permits. Uh, we've advertised the project in October. We opened bids December eighth. Uh, the good news is the bids came in low and as you can see from, uh, the list here, KLB Construction was the low, low bid at roughly eight point nine million. The engineer's estimate for the project was ten point three million, which resulted in a, a savings, cost savings of the project of one point four million. But as you can see, the, the contract is divided into Schedule A and Schedule B. So Schedule A is city work. Schedule B is the North Shore Utility District work. So we share in that cost savings. Uh, the cost savings in Schedule A is a little bit, it's, it's almost one point one million. Next slide. Project schedule. So we're in January. We get construction authorization. We'll start construction in March and it'll take two construction seasons to build this project. So starting in March and will end roughly at the end of next summer in September of twenty-two. And, uh, at the end of twenty-two, we'll, we'll do closeout of the project into twenty twenty-three. Next slide. As with every construction project, uh, there's traffic impacts. And this project was structured such that segments along the corridor would be closed and detours would, would be provided through the neighboring, uh, streets in order to allow large detention vaults to be constructed in the roadway. This also is, it's a safety measure as well. This will be twenty-four-seven closures with these detours and, uh, local traffic will be accommodated along these closed sections. And we've got several of them. This one is shown one eighty-fifth to one ninetieth is the first section, which we presume that the contractor will start working uphill as they install, uh, their drainage and utilities. Next slide. As we go further up, we've got, uh, one ninetieth to one ninety-fifth will be another closure again through the cr- through the side streets. This is a typo, but at one ninety-fifth to sixty-six is the other closure. And we'll be detouring traffic through one ninety-eight street to sixty-first. Next slide. And lastly, the section between sixty-first and sixty-six where, uh, that'll be closed and we'll be redirecting traffic through sixty-six up to Locust Way, sixty-first place. Next slide. With that, uh, we'd like to, uh, request approval to authorize a construction contract to KLB Construction plus a ten percent contingency. And with that, I'll open it up. Any questions anybody has?
Do we have any, have any questions? Anybody have any questions? Yes, Deputy Mayor?
You have any idea how long each of those, uh, twenty-four-seven closures will last?
Uh, I don't know. We'll divide it in five. I guess if there's three hundred working days. You know, it's just, it's just hard to predict. I mean, there's, there's a lot, we'll, we'll learn a lot more once the contractor gets on board and they, they, they might propose something completely different that we want to consider to, to, to look at traffic control, but that's what we've got in the contract right now.
Okay, thank you.
So, any other questions? Some of the newer council members may not know, but Mr. Vaughn is a very talented a- artist. Mr. Vaughn is responsible for Hank. And Hank is our mascot. And will Hank be present during this project? Kent?
I'm sure there'll be some sidewalk inserts and things like that.
But we'll have signs, Hank thing, be careful, right? Or whatever you want those construction signs. We thank you.
Construction sign with them on it for sure.
We, uh, we certainly thank you for, uh, contributing Hank to our community. Allow us to have him for our mascot. Uh, if there are no further questions, the chair will entertain a motion to, uh, authorize the city manager to execute contract number two zero C, uh, two one four three with KLB Construction in the amount of nine million eight hundred and five thousand to construct the sixty-eighth Avenue Northeast Pedestrian and Bicycle Safety Improvements.
Moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All right. Uh, is there any further discussion? Hearing none. Will the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember O'Kane?
Yes.
Councilmember Coogler?
Yes.
Councilmember Marshall?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Shrubneck?
Yes.
Councilmember File?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Herbig?
Yes.
Vote is unanimous.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, uh, Mr. Vincente and, uh, Mr. Vaughn. Appreciate all the work. All right. Uh, next item on the agenda is the Microsoft Air Quality Sensors update presented by Environmental Services Director, Mr. Sawyer. Mr. Sawyer, I know you're there. There you are.
I am here. Good evening, Mayor, City Council. I am here to provide a brief update on the city's partnership with Microsoft, uh, which deployed, um, several air sensors throughout the city at the beginning of twenty twenty. To provide a quick recap, um, as was mentioned in public comment, the mayor, um, was, uh, made aware of, uh, kind of a cool project that Microsoft Research was working on, uh, where they are trying to develop these compact, uh, relatively inexpensive air quality monitors that can be mass-produced and, uh, deployed all over the world. And, uh, so the mayor got in contact with them and then, um, they reached out to us and, and we developed an agreement to allow them kind of a testing ground so that they could deploy the sensors, uh, in the real world and, and various areas of the public right-of-way and, and collect data and see how their sensors work and, and make modifications as needed. Uh, and towards the end of February twenty twenty, they, uh, put about fifteen, sixteen sensors out in various locations around the city and, uh, started collecting data. Uh, but these first kind of version sensors are, um, primarily collecting particulate matter information as well as humidity, temperature, and some other kind of background things that they need. And, uh, let them start going. And then, um, so from the end of February to the beginning of June, uh, they were out there collecting data and, uh, Microsoft collected them from the field at that time to, uh, start, um, kind of taking what they were learning from that deployment and, uh, make some firmware modifications. They wanted to try, um, updating them with solar capabilities. So they, uh, changed a lot of the electronics and, and made them solar capable and then got those, uh, redeployed by the end of September to start collecting data again. And, um, and so that round is still out there and that's been collecting data, uh, through today. And the, but I think, uh, they have been, uh, I really want to stress the point that, you know, this is a, these are prototypes. They're, they're tinkering with them. They're putting them out. They're, they're seeing what works, what doesn't work. I know this winter, they've really been struggling with power management issues with the sensors. So, um, I've noticed lots of gaps in the data. Uh, I know they've recently gone out and, and, uh, made some modifications to the batteries. So, um, I'm, I'm gonna show you the changes we made to the website. So you can access the data. You can download data. But I just want, want you to keep that in mind that you will see gaps. There'll be periods where some sensors are down, some sensors are working, but just keep in mind that these are, um, again, they're, they're still developing these. These are prototypes. And the, the reason that they're coming out and putting it out in the field is to, to see what kind of issues come up so that they can, they can fix these and eventually be able to mass-produce them as, you know, reliable, uh, long-term sensors that can get out there and start collecting data. Uh, I would like to, uh, for the benefit of the, the interested members of the public and council, just share my screen and I will show you quickly on the city's website how to find the data and download. So if I'm displaying the correct thing, you will see the city Kenmore website. I'm going to go to the public works page, environmental services, and you'll see we have recently added a page called air quality. So from here, there'll be, um, kind of some basic background information, links to other air quality resources such as the Puget Sound Cleaner Agency page, Washington State Department of Ecology. A little bit of information about, um, the deployments that have gone out and, and, um, where we are. You can see a photo here. Uh, that's what one of the sensors look like. So it's just about the size of the palm of your hand. It's in the shape of a maple leaf. This one has been mounted at the top of a stop sign near City Hall. Uh, provides some information what the, what the sensors are collecting. I think once they figure out their power management issues that they've been having and, and that becomes more reliable and, and robust, um, they, the next phase sensors will actually be upgraded with, uh, new gas monitors. So in addition to particulate matter, um, they're going to be adding gas sensors for ozone, carbon monoxide, sulfur dioxide, and nitrogen dioxide, which are, uh, their standard parameters that the EPA and, and PSCA use for air quality index measurements. We have added, um, uh, two clickable links here. So, uh, council or anyone in the public can actually come here and download the raw data set from February twenty twenty to June twenty twenty. And that will just come in and you can put that in, in the application like Excel and, um, everything's laid out pretty intuitively. You'll see the station name, the lat long, the different parameters. And you can start plotting those out in whatever fashion that you'd like to see the data plotted out. Somewhat recently, uh, the Microsoft Research team that we're working with, uh, they've actually started kind of, um, coming up with some draft ways to display the data through Microsoft Power BI, which is an application they can use to, um, display the, the data real-time online. So they've actually provided a link for us to that and we've embedded that in the website right here. So if, when you get to the bottom of the screen, you can see the station locations and zoom in and out and find a station that you want here. So hover over that. And then get, so for instance, this is showing average air quality, um, collected between September thirtieth and January sixteenth, that little date range. And you can, um, modify this and then get updated values. So now we'll be showing you data for the range that you've indicated here. And then you can toggle between screens and, and actually just as, uh, as I mentioned, this is all always changing and being tweaked and improved. Uh, it looks like they've already changed some of the tabs here. So in the council report, I described the four tab options that were there two weeks ago and it looks like they've already changed these and now there's five options. So, um, we will work to, to update these explanations of what you're looking at down here. But bear in mind that, uh, these are also kind of changing. But, um, I think if you go to the next one, it will show you live data or the ones that have the power to be transmitting right now. So I can go to a site and you can see this was a value from January sixteen. But, uh, and then you can toggle through here. Mentioned in, in plot data through different date ranges here. I know they've been doing a lot of work, um, in the last couple of weeks with the batteries. So, um, there's going to be gaps. So there may be stations missing one. You'll see just little dips here with no values being recorded. But again, kind of coming back, we will be providing all the data as we get it. So we will, uh, download, we'll get data dumps from Microsoft. We will turn around and keep this, uh, updated at least monthly, um, so that council and public will have access to that. But, um, that is where we are now. And, um, as I said, we'll continue, uh, working with Microsoft Research Team there, providing feedback on, um, how their graphical interfaces are working, what's convenient. And, you know, letting them continue using the right-of-way and, and getting their sensors out there and, and see how things are working. With that, are there any questions? With that, are there any questions?
Questions? Council have any questions?
Councilmember.
Hi, Richard. Thank you so much for that presentation and information. I think this is a really interesting project. I'm curious as to how collaborative Microsoft Research is with the participants of this program? If there's any room to work with them on some of the data analysis or even with others who are also participating in the program?
Yeah, the conversations, for the most part, right now have just been more on the technical side of just getting the sensors out and seeing how they're working, collecting data. And, you know, just encountering issues and overcoming those issues. So we haven't really had a lot of conversations about analyzing data or what it what it might be in the future. But I think, I mean, my experience in working so far is, I mean, they're very collaborative and I'm sure excited to look into possibilities of doing that. I think right now they're just very focused on just trying to get them to work reliably and like I said, eventually they would like a long-lasting sensor that's collecting more than just what the particulate matter data they're collecting right now, but those other gas sensors installed and working. And then, once I think they've reached a point where they feel that these are reliable, they probably, they want to sit down and start thinking about, okay, now what's the data mean? What would the city like to use that data for? What kind of analyses should we be considering, et cetera?
So, a little bit on that, in that there are five different parameters that Microsoft is trying to get the functioning for. Richard mentioned some other ones, that there, some of the gases they're looking at being able to detect reliably. But as far as the data and manipulation of the data, they're providing access to the raw data and there are other companies that will be developing the front-end for it to make it user-friendly and allow Kenmore and other cities to be able to see what they need to see in the data. So that's still in the future, but that'll be third parties that are working on that. Councilmember File.
Thank you, Mayor Baker. You know, Mr. Sawyer, I would have really liked to see, within this reported data, when the sensors were not working. We did hear along the way that there were times when sensors were not working. And I think that's important to the overall data, especially in public transparency and what we're reporting. But I appreciate your time and the effort you put into presenting this today. Thank you.
Councilmember Shrubnik.
Yeah, thank you for this. This is great to get an update and it's great to be part of kind of a pilot project. And I know this is of very high interest to our residents and to us. So I appreciate you pulling this together. You know, our residents have kind of brought to our attention the importance of measuring what is termed VOCs, volatile organic compounds. And not being a chemist, I don't know whether the gases that, well, and also PAHs, which are polycyclic aromatic hydrocarbons. And so I'm curious whether any of the ones that are kind of on the list to be done, the gases that you were speaking of are of those kind, and if not, do they have any ability to measure either of those things?
I am, I can. I'm writing down your questions right now and I'd be happy to look into that and get back to you.
Thanks.
Anybody else? All right. Thank you, Mr. Sawyer.
Thank you.
The report. Next item on the agenda is a joint meeting with Planning Commission to review recommendations on affordable housing process. This is going to be presented by the Planning Commission and Development Services Director, Debbie Bent, and I'm sure Mrs. Anderson will be in there somewhere.
Yes, good evening, Mayor. I believe the city clerk is now pulling up the Planning Commission members to join us. And so this evening, the joint meeting, the Planning Commission will be presenting the recommendations on proposed amendments to affordable housing regulations. This supports a affordable housing review process for low and very low-income affordable housing project. This is just one tool that supports affordable housing. This was a 2020 docket item assigned to the Planning Commission and it's an implementation measure within the adopted affordable housing strategy. And you might recall, last July, council gave some preliminary feedback. There was no formal direction or council consensus. There were individual council comments and those indicated a preference for an expedited review process and consideration for discussion of housing for seniors and housing for those with disabilities. So this evening, I would ask Laurie to give an overview of the process and of the proposed recommendations from the Planning Commission. And then individual planning commissioners will then comment on the six guiding principles that they used to develop the recommendations. And following that, there will be an opportunity for council comment, questions, and direction on the recommendations. An ordinance will be only brought forward once council is satisfied with the recommendations. If there are substantive amendments to the Planning Commission recommendations, there would need to be an additional public hearing prior to consideration of an ordinance. So I would now like to turn it over to Laurie. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Baker, City Council members and members of the Planning Commission. So as Debbie mentioned, tonight, the Planning Commission is presenting their recommendations on the Affordable Housing Permit Review Process amendments. And my role is just to provide an overview and introduction to the project. So as Debbie mentioned, the project came from the Housing Strategy Plan and the goal was to make it easier and faster to permit affordable housing projects, particularly those projects on tax-exempt properties such as churches and on parcels owned by public agencies such as the Park and Ride property. So the Planning Commission, as part of the 2020 docket, began work on this in August. And they settled on three approaches. So I'm just gonna go over these there, included in your agenda materials. But the first approach was to reduce the review process for projects that include low and very low-income affordable housing units and multifamily and commercial districts to a lesser process. So typically, there would be a project that might have to go through what's called a Type 2 review. And under this scenario, projects would move to a Type 1 permit review if they included affordable housing units. Again, low or very low-income affordable housing units.
Low and very low. Sorry to bother you.
Sure. So low and very low, and this is in your agenda materials. Very low, it differs for rental or purchase housing, but we'll assume rental housing. So thirty-four rental housing, low and very low income is thirty-five percent of median income adjusted for household size. And low income is fifty percent of median income adjusted for household size.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure that was out there in the public. Thank you.
Yeah, sure. Anyway, so the most typical type of project that this would impact would be something called a site plan review. And that's defined in the zoning code. There's a map of certain areas mostly around downtown. And again, this could only be in a multifamily or a commercial zoning district that could be reduced, or a project including residential density incentives or a transfer of development credits. So the change, the fundamental change, is that there would not be, if you move from a Type 1 or a Type 2 to a Type 1, there would not be a public notice unless a State Environmental Policy Act review was required. And the threshold for that review is twenty housing units. And there would be no local administrative appeal. So you could appeal to court, but there would not be a local appeal. And again, this is a way to expedite processing of these projects that include affordable housing units. One thing that the Planning Commission decided was that the reduced review process could not occur if there were going to be a waiver of development standards. In other words, if you wanted to modify a building requirement, you couldn't go to the lower process and achieve that. So if you were doing a variance, for example, or you wanted to do a critical areas modification, you could not go from the Type 2 to the Type 1. The second approach that the Planning Commission is recommending has to do with a request from a proponent of an affordable housing project who wants expedited review and comes to the city and requests that. If the city has staffing availability, the city could expedite the project based on the timeline that the developer is interested in. If there were not staffing available, then the proponent might be able to move ahead using a consultant that would be working for the city if the developer paid for that review. And then the last process that the commission is recommending has to do with properties owned or under the control of a religious organization. And that is some, that religious organization is defined by state law. And in fact, this is in response to a recent state law. And this would amend the Development Agreement chapter to allow consideration of a density increase in any zone for a 100% affordable housing project. So it wouldn't be that there were just a few units in the project. It would all have to be affordable housing and it would occur on properties owned or controlled by the religious organization. So those are the three basic approaches that the Planning Commission is recommending. And the amendments are attached to your packet. And now, as Debbie said, the planning commissioners are going to talk about the principles behind their recommendations. So.
So I'm up first. Good evening, everyone. The first guiding principle that we decided to follow was that the special review process should only be available for developments, including low in very low-income housing. In 2012, the county-wide housing assessment stipulated a need for 24% housing for those with less than 50% adjusted median income. This is considered low and very low-income housing. In 2016, we have data for Kenmore, which identifies seventeen point five percent with low and very low housing. And of those, only 2.8% are rental, very low, 9.3% rental, and 5.4% owned at low. Those percentages can be compared to the moderate income percentage. The need is 16% and Kenmore has approximately 14.5%. Or more than 80% AMI, Kenmore has 68%. So you can see that we definitely need to add more low and very low housing. The Planning Commission considered available data and input from various sources, including citizen comments, and focused on amendments that would encourage development of very low and low-income housing.
I have the next guiding principle. Developing this mission's commissioner's second principle. We considered whether or not project developments focused on special populations should have access to an expedited process. Given that our first and primary principle was we wanted to focus and support low and very low-income affordable housing, we decided that the expedited process would not be made available solely on the basis of a proposed project's intent to focus on special populations, for instance, senior housing or disabled. However, projects that included a significant proportion of their focus on low income or very low income would be available, have availability to the expedited process. We did spend considerable amount of time discussing this. There was a good hearty conversation on that, but in the end, we decided one of our guiding principles was, again, was to reinforce that the expedited process and and the amount of effort that goes into it on the part of the city and where the city's principles really should be or ought to be, is that we would focus on the lower-income population and not necessarily for special populations solely based upon their population basis.
Mark?
Yes.
Address the next one?
Yeah, so Mike, can you hear me? Okay, so I have the third one and that principle is that we felt the development of any size, providing this type of affordable housing for low and very low-income people, should be eligible for the expedited review process. I think that was, in keeping with our interests, as has been mentioned, in promoting as many opportunities as possible to build affordable housing, as you all know, every unit counts and every unit makes a difference. We did have some questions about the financial or economic viability of providing affordable housing in some smaller developments, say, you know, on the order of five to 10 units. But it was really kind of beyond the scope of our docket and discussions to dig into that in any depth. So again, we opted for the more inclusive approach. I think in practice, you know, as I think as mentioned, we're likely to see a large development in the focus of these affordable housing review processes. So again, we wanted to cast as wide a net as possible, so.
I don't know if Commissioner Olson is online. He was taking the next guiding principle. I guess he isn't, so the next guiding principle was development standards, for the most part, should not be waived with a special review process. And I think that was taking sort of council initial comments that we should focus on the review process rather than waiving development standards. I don't know if any other commissioner wants to jump in and add to that?
I'll add to it, just to say that we, in our discussion, one of our concerns was that we didn't want to create an opening here where a neighborhood could be substantially impacted by unintended or unreviewed and uncommented variance in in the development standards. So we're open to more discussion or looking into that, but at this point, we wanted to make sure we protected our neighborhoods from an unintended and uncommon, unreviewed process.
And I was in charge of explaining the last two points, the first of which is that the process should not rely on any new staffing. After discussion with city staff, and as I'm sure most of the city council is aware, Kenmore is actually very notable for having an expedited review process in the region. And we felt that there was no need to hire additional staff because the city's review process was already efficient enough to accommodate these expedited reviews. And as of right now, the benefits of what another staff member would bring would not outweigh the costs of that extra salary. And we, so overall, we felt that there was no specific need for an additional city staff member based on the current ability of the city right now. The last point is that local project notice and appeals, particularly in single-family zoning districts, are an important community benefit. And this is something that the commission actually talked about quite significantly. And this is something that the the Commission actually talked about quite significantly. We felt that it was very beneficial to have citizen input. But we also decided, based on the facts, that many of these affordable housing projects in multifamily and commercial zones, in accordance with the city's focus on increasing density in those zones with these kinds of projects, that it would be all right to drop down the the review process of these projects to a level one review in return for removing the notice and appeals process, at least on the administrative level. Also, in discussion with city staff, we found this was the most effective way, both within the city and with developers, that would decrease the most amount of time in the entire process. So this, in fact, would be the most significant part. Again, I'd just like to enforce what my colleagues have said this evening, that these project notices and appeals, they are not taken away completely, particularly with projects that do that reach a certain CIPA level or the 20 plus housing units or any other variation option. So they would be still open to notice and appeal at that time. Also with appeals that that right is not taken away from citizens altogether, they're still able to take this up in court. And so we felt that these these benefits and rights of the citizens would still be present for the most significant projects while still achieving the the idea of trying to expedite this process.
So that concludes the presentation by staff and the Planning Commission. And so the commissioners and staff are here if council has any questions. Mayor, I believe you're muted.
Sorry about that. Let's go with Councilmember File, Councilmember Shrubnik, and then the Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Baker. I want to appreciate and thank you for your time in putting this together. Personally, I have concerns over lacking of public notices. I think this is important to our community. And I do think it's important to have public input. I am not comfortable with reducing that process. And I don't think our community would be comfortable with that. I completely understand the need to expedite a process. And when I think about housing and who's developing housing, whether it's a broad approach for multifamilies, for low income to very low income. I understand that approach, yet if a housing development is going in for affordable housing or very low affordable housing for seniors, it should include disability or those with disabilities due to the the severe lack of housing, let alone how the structures are built to be more accommodating. And that is my personal opinion. Thank you.
Well, Councilmember Shrubnik and then Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, and thank you, the Planning Commission. This is this is great work with not a ton of guidance, certainly from us. So really appreciate the work and, you know, to me, every little bit helps in terms of fostering and encouraging affordable housing. So I love the first two points. I did have a couple of little questions about the the third, the third strategy. And I think I probably just am not understanding this, so. So I'm curious why religious organizations are called out in particular as opposed to any? Is that a subset of number two? It doesn't seem to be speaking to the expedited. So I think it's just something totally different. And if so, if it's about the density and not the expedited review, I'm just curious why religious organizations are called out and not, it wouldn't apply to others. And so that's one question. And the second question is the bar, you know, the density increases in any zone for 100% affordable housing. And that's a pretty high bar. And I and I guess I'm curious about that, too, because I believe in our TOD, for example, it's not nearly that high to get density bonuses. And of course, what I'm not remembering is what is it actually in the TOD? But so I guess those are my two questions.
So I'm happy to take those questions unless the commissioner wishes to respond. Okay, so the interesting thing about option number three is that it actually is directed to us straight from state law. RCW 3670A 545 is fairly new. I think it was passed in 2019 and it mandates that cities address this very topic. The state law defines religious organization and restricts the law to religious organizations. And then the law also says that that cities need to make a provision for 100% affordable housing projects, which is where the 100% came in.
So. Great from the state law. And do we have any latitude in in modifying that or extending it or expanding it?
Right, so the Planning Commission did make one modification, which is because of the focus on low and very low income affordable housing, they noted in this Development Agreement chapter. And again, development agreements are negotiated and approved or disapproved by the city council. So it would ultimately be a city council decision. But what the Planning Commission's note about these types of projects is that if you are not providing low or very low income affordable housing, you can't request a density increase greater than the maximum density you could request in a zone. Most of our residential areas have a, in fact, all of our areas pretty much have a range of density. You can do this much. And then if you provide affordable housing, you can get more units. So for moderate income units, the Development Agreement chapter would say you can go to the maximum density that's already allowed in the zone. If you provide low and very low income affordable housing, you can request whatever density you want for consideration. That doesn't mean approval, it means for consideration.
Thanks, that's super helpful.
Yep, you're mayor.
Thank you. First off, I want to thank all of you for all the hard work that went into this. I have a quick comment and then I have a question. I just want to say that when it comes to kind of the tools that the city has at our disposal to help build affordable housing without allocating more money towards the problem, we don't have a lot of them. Expedited permitting is one great way that we can make it easier for affordable housing developers to come to Kenmore, help us address the affordable housing crisis that the entire region is facing. I think it's a smart move. I think there's some careful guardrails in what you guys have presented us. And hopefully we'll make it just a little bit easier for affordable housing to be built in Kenmore. My question has to do with, and you might have just answered it a little bit in your answer to Councilmember Shrubnik. And attachment three, the first highlighted section says, and considering a request for an increased density bonus for affordable housing located in property owner controlled by religious organization, dot, dot, dot. At the very end, it says to achieve a greater density bonus, the project shall provide a significant proportion of low or very low income affordable housing units. What constitutes a significant proportion?
As always, a very good question. And the Planning Commission, we talked about this. Should there be a number? Should there not be a number? Shall we assume that this is a discretionary permit that's negotiated in front of the city council and just say we want it to be? What, maybe more than half, but not specify exactly how many? And and I think the Commission concluded that because the economics of different projects will make something feasible or not, that they didn't want to get down to a strict percentage or number.
So would a proposal that wanted to use this? Would it go to the city manager, development services, or would it come to the council?
This, this is, I believe, in the Development Agreement chapter, correct?
It's under general provisions. Development agreement looks like it's just the next.
So I'm trying to figure out.
Unless I missed, well.
Are here.
I guess it is under the Development Agreement section.
Yeah, yes, it is.
Okay.
So the Development Agreement is is something that is done directly in front of the city council.
Right, that makes sense. Thank you very much.
And Mayor Baker, Councilmember Marshall with a question.
Yes, please.
Thank you. So thank you to the Commission for this hard work and a very important topic. Did the Commission at all consider any alternatives to the no notice option for the commercial areas? Were there any minimum public notices that were were considered by the Commissioner or any suggestions that there might be?
Shall I speak to that? I don't think that the Planning Commission considered other options because our permit review processes are laid out pretty clearly in the zoning code. And and the public notice section, I mean, you have to notify if you're required to do a public notice, you have to do it within a certain number of feet and that kind of thing. So I'm not sure, for example, it wouldn't make a lot of sense to reduce the how many feet out you would do a notice. It or maybe even the type of notice that you did. If you have a notice, you have to have a notice period. And that was the concern, the timeframe, the two or three, however long the notice period was. It was the time period that was of concern. So this was a way to expedite the permit process by reducing the length of time you had to give public notice.
Right, but wasn't, didn't you say also that the notice was eliminated in some cases where the type was changed?
In in the first approach to the expedited review, then rather than do a public notice and then a decision is made, this would eliminate the public notice period in, again, multifamily and commercial zones. You'd move to a lesser noticing if your project included low and very low income affordable housing.
Okay, well, okay, there's some lesser noticing. What was, what is that noticing then?
It would mean that you would not be sending out a notice unless your project was also having to go through the State Environmental Policy Act review. And the threshold, I mean, there are a number of CIPA thresholds, but probably the most relevant one here is the 20 dwelling units. You also have CIPA thresholds that deal with critical areas and and different things. But we called out the the housing unit threshold, thinking that for projects of 20 units or more, you would have a public notice through CIPA. But for the smaller projects, then you would not have the notice.
Right, okay, thank you. And then so just to clarify, the Commission did not consider any public notice requirements then for under 20 units?
No.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Yes, Councilmember Shrubnik.
I realize I already spoke, but I think a couple of council members.
Anybody else raising their hand that hasn't spoken? So go ahead.
Yeah, that's what I just wanted to be careful that. But I think a couple other council members brought up this same issue and it it is a little provocative to me as well, thinking about it now. I wonder, I mean, usually when we talk about public notice, there's like public notice and then there's an opportunity to comment and blah, 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 blah. I'm wondering if there could be literally just notice. Like, this is happening. It is not waving, it does not meet the CIPA threshold. It does, it is not wavering anything. It is, you know, completely consistent with our existing regulations. We just wanted to let you know this is going to be happening. I mean, you know, in other words, a true notice, but not saying, you know, and here's your opportunity to comment. I don't, I don't know if that's ever done.
Commissioners will want to weigh in on this. From a staff perspective, I can say that telling people that something is happening without the opportunity to comment is probably a little bit frustrating. It would be like a building permit, basically. The Development Services Director would still be reviewing the permit against the criteria. And then the project would move to the building permit. And again, these are not projects that require any waiver of development standards. And they are not projects like conditional uses or that kind of thing. It really would be projects that really go through the process because of kind of where they're located downtown and along 522.
I think that's important to remember is that is in the commercial and multifamily zones. So we are already anticipating density. This, this was not a process that the Commission felt comfortable with in the single family zones.
Yes, if I may just add on to that, to kind of clarify all of this, we have these guardrails in place just for this reason in particular. The Commission felt very strongly that public notice and an appeal was very important to us. But we considered the guardrail that this would only be considered in the multifamily and commercial zones. So it wouldn't be in the residential zones or neighborhoods. And that it would only apply to projects that had under 20 units of of housing, meaning smaller projects and no projects that had any other sort of variation. So basically, small projects away from residential areas that didn't have any adverse impacts. We felt that was acceptable to move it up in the process because city staff had noted to us that this would be basically one of the only ways and the most effective ways to essentially decrease and expedite the process. Many of the other suggestions we discussed are almost negligible compared to this specific piece. And so weighing these factors and having those guardrails in place, that's why we felt that it was appropriate just for this small categorization of affordable housing.
Yes, Councilmember Kugler.
Councilmember Okane was actually first, I believe.
Go ahead, I'll come back to Councilmember Okane next.
Okay. Good evening, Planning Commission. Thank you so much for all of the work and it's great to see many of you who have been on the Planning Commission for many years. I have a question about the affordable housing policy and I wonder if this might have been beyond the scope of this review. But is there any feedback from staff or like even anecdotally to know that speeding up the process would actually result in more affordable housing? Is it possible to know that, that that is an actual fix or solution?
I think that would, it would be hard to know. I think so the the basic thing is time is money. So the faster that you can get things done, it's a cost saving for the for the project proponent. And so that's sort of anecdotally what I guess that the why we went down this this path. I don't think the intent is overall to increase the housing supply. This is to make it easier for people who already had a project in mind.
Okay, thank you.
Because we were thinking that the sponsors of these sorts of projects were very likely to be nonprofits and those on a small budget, that even though the expedited process may not have a large financial impact for most developers, for these specific developers, every dollar counts. And this is one of the ways we could help them, help those specific type of development.
Yes, kind of going off of what my colleague here said, you know, with an expedited process, it becomes more appealing to developers, too. And we'd like to attract those developers who can. who can bring affordable housing to our city. And so this is another way, another tool in our toolkit to attract that affordable housing and faster, too. It's just one more thing to add that we can to make it easier.
Councilmember O'Kane?
Well, first, I do want to thank the Planning Commission for the very thoughtful approach to affordable housing that you brought forward today. I, excuse me, my dog is kind of growling right now. But what I want to share is that I really like and appreciate the creative approach to expediting permitting. I think it's incredibly important. I like that you've contained it in a way that fits within zones that are appropriate for density and more housing. I also think it's important to recognize, in addition to the benefits to the people building the affordable housing, there's a benefit to the time. We are in a crisis. The sooner we're able to build housing, the better. And I do think that this is a really nice approach to expedite the process. So I support the way you presented it today. So thank you.
Anybody else? Any comments on this? All right, nobody else wishes to be heard. You're looking for guidance from us?
If you're ready to give guidance, I haven't heard any comments so far that would warrant amendments to the recommendation.
And you're, I think you guys are on the right direction. And we appreciate you letting us know where you're at on this, and we applaud your efforts of what you've accomplished so far. So thank you. We will be looking forward to more, you know, and I'm very happy to see that you are considering down in the 30%, and 50% income levels, because that's what's really needed in our city. It's been higher for much too long. We need to start looking at these lower ones and encourage development at these lower levels. We've been contributing to Arch for many years, and the money is with Arch to help bring the costs down for developers to get some more of these low, low-income units available to us. So thank you for your efforts, and we really appreciate the hard work you put into this. All right. If you don't have anything else to come in front of us here, we will move on to the next item.
And we will, staff will then be working with the attorney and bringing back an ordinance for council consideration that reflects the Planning Commission's recommendations.
Wonderful. We'll look forward to it. All right. Next item on the agenda is staff report. Mr. City Manager?
Nothing to report, Your Honor, but thank you for the great city council retreat a couple of weekends ago. I really appreciate your direction and giving us your time during that weekend. So thank you.
All right. Councilmember reports, comments, and initiatives. This is where we report on things that, on the committees that we're on for the city and any, any other things that need to be reported to the council. So let's go ahead and start with a council member, O'Kane.
Um, I don't have much to report out today, but I do want to acknowledge MLK Day yesterday and be thankful for that. And I also, on the retreat, when our city manager mentioned the retreat, I just want to say that it felt really good to hear back from staff about the excitement around our focus on the environment and climate, the outcome of this year's retreat. So I'm thrilled to hear this excitement, and I know that our community is going to be greatly thankful for it. So and again, just thank you to staff and the City, the Planning Commission for the quality work they're bringing forward to us, as well as John Vicente and Richard Sawyer, who spoke today. Each time I come to council, I have a great appreciation for the quality of work that the city brings. So thank you.
Councilmember Marshall?
Yes, thank you. I also want to acknowledge the Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. and his dream and our dream for our democracy. And thank everybody tonight for participating in every capacity you have. Thank you.
Councilmember Kugler?
I want to apologize for the technical difficulties I experienced at the beginning of our meeting. I'll be sure to log in earlier and test that out and make sure that that doesn't happen again. And that's it.
Councilmember Shrubnik?
And yeah, I echo what other folks said about Martin Luther King Day and democracy and city operations are democracy in action. And we have, we're lucky to have each other working together and our incredible staff and Planning Commission. I have one little thing that was brought to us over email, and I just want to flag it because I don't want to lose it. It's the issue of getting some enhanced buoys on the seaplane lane in the north end of the lake here. And I'm not entirely clear what the next step is. So I guess I'm maybe wondering how that's, if that's going to be handled on the staff end, but if they need more budget, does that come to us? I do think it's a very important safety issue.
Mr. City Manager?
Yeah, the mayor forwarded me that. I'm not sure why the King County Sheriff's Deputy decided to CC the city council and nobody in the sheriff's department, including our chief, and nobody on city staff. I'm not sure this is a policy issue at the city council level yet. So I've asked our chief to follow up with that deputy to find out what's going on. So stay tuned.
Thanks.
Councilmember File?
Thank you, Mayor Baker. And I also am grateful that we did celebrate Martin Luther King Day with the rest of our country yesterday. And Martin Luther King once said, "We know through painful experience that freedom is never voluntarily given by the oppressor. It must be demanded by the oppressed." So that's some lasting words to think about that. I do want to say that Association of Washington Cities has a scholarship for high school students through the CQC scholarship. And there is a deadline by March 12. Usually cities work with local high schools to identify students to nominate for this scholarship. There's six scholarships of $1,500. I wonder how we might look to work with our local high school for possible nominees. City councils do make a nomination, and this would be one great way to help a local high school student possibly receive a scholarship to attend college or trade school. And on a different note, I'll be attending the Congressional City Conference in March. And I did just accept the federal, a federal appointment for a Federal Committee on Human Development for the National League of Cities. So I'm excited about that. And I'll be doing a separate release with them probably later in the week.
Deputy Mayor?
Again, nothing to add. My colleagues have already said everything that I would have said more eloquently than I am at this point. I did want to add, as far as committees go, I was just named an alternate to the Regional Affordable Housing Committee, the one that Mayor Baker actually helped kind of chair up and form a couple of years back. Reminds me, I need to give you a call and talk about the committee a little bit at some point, Mr. Mayor. So I'm excited to start work on that. As one of the biggest issues we're facing as a region, it'll be nice to be able to get my hands dirty and get a little bit further into it. I've done some work with Arch for the city, but this will be a nice next step. So I'm excited about that. And that's all I've got tonight.
All right. As long as we're talking about committees, I was appointed to the Information, Technology, Communications Committee for the 14th year in a row. I'm also on the University Communities Council and the Youth Education and Families Council for National League of Cities. I was on the Board of Directors for eight years with the National League of Cities. So as a result, I serve on the Advisory Council and continue to do that. Also, this past couple of weeks, I testified in front of House Environment and Energy Committee on Representative Palet's Bill for the air quality monitoring. I've also met with four different legislators on that committee, and we're meeting with all the legislators on the Environment, the House Environment and Energy Committee to try to explain things a little bit better, answer any concerns they may have, and again, cement the support to move this bill out of committee. So we continue doing that. Other than that, I don't think there's anything else to come in front of us tonight. And there's nothing to come in front of this council. We stand adjourned. Thank you all, and we'll see you on January 25, it looks like. So thank you.